Good evening. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of September 26, 2018. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you all very much. Steve, for the folks at home. We have the agenda on the screen. You can take a look at some of the things we'll be discussing this evening. We have several public hearings. Many of them relate to the Hoffman development, which we believe is about to begin construction with the model homes. And we also have on the agenda for this evening a brief discussion about the community development block grant. We have our audit reports back from our auditorium. And we are doing our local law regarding the Red Church Cemetery, which we took over this year. We mentioned that at the last meeting. And then we have all these districts. And you'll be hearing a lot of technical language about the districts for the Hoffman development, which I believe is now called something like Tradition or something like that. Is that right?
Is that going to be the name? Yes, Tradition at Red Hook.
Tradition at Red Hook. Okay, very good. We are, we'll be discussing a justice court grant and we'll be executing a work agreement for the Empire State Trail on the northern portion of the trail in our township, updating our sexual harassment policy. And we'll be approving a request to go out for bid for highway materials for 2019. And then we have our board reports and department reports as well. Okay, so starting off, just a couple of announcements. We'd like to let you know our county executive writes to us to let us know that we received our municipal innovation grant, and that's $50,000, to be put towards retrofitting our bathrooms at the Rec Park for accessibility. And we thank the county. We thank our engineer, Brandy, who prepared the grant as well, and everyone else involved in that. We received notice from the comptroller's office just the other day that our fiscal stress report has been issued for Red Hook. And we're happy to report that we are for the second year in a row. Our rating is 1.7. It's a near-perfect score for municipality. Susceptibility, or the beginning of it, starts at 45, just to give you some idea of how well we scored. It's quite likely we will have a perfect score next year because they take a three-year average for indebtedness. And we will be at the very bottom level of that. So that's really good news for everyone. And thank you to everyone who helps to manage our expenses here and also to get some revenues as well. Dutchess County also writes to us to let us know that there's a non-residential day for hazardous waste disposal. It's down at the county, Sand Dock Road, Poughkeepsie. And you must register by October 5th, so that's next Friday. The date of the event, however, is Friday, October 26th. And that is for businesses and farms and so on and so forth that generate less than 220 pounds or approximately 26 gallons of non-acute hazardous waste per month. And that's October 26th. And you'll need to register solid waste management at duchessny.gov or call 462-6090. No other announcement except to say for the very few people who are here, Tivoli Street Painting, one of the best events we have in our community, is this Saturday, begins at 10 o'clock. I and many others here will be there. I will be painting squares because that's all I know how to do. And so that's this Saturday. Okay, very good. Any other announcements? Anyone want to add? No? Okay.
We could just remind people to continue to go to our website and check it out. It's new. And subscribe on the notify me link at the very top. I was trying to get a list, like how many, a number of subscribers, but I couldn't get that before the meeting.
Okay.
I know we do have people signing up. So sign up and you'll get updates about new press releases, new public notices, and calendar items and all kinds of things, so.
Yep, and any topics you're interested in, Sarah. Thank you very much for all your work on the website. And we again ask for your patience as we always do. Anything that we're doing that's new. Obviously, there's lots of kinks to be worked out. But I think we're getting there. And we've got lots of compliments on it, so thank you all very much. Okay, we're running just a couple minutes late. First of all, we have our first public comment period, which can begin now. So if anybody would like to make public comments... Would anyone like to do that, public comments? Okay, good. We're gonna get started with our first public hearing. That's at 7:35. We're running a couple minutes late. It's to solicit any input on the 2019 Community Development Block Grant application. And Sue, is there a public notice that was issued on this?
There is. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on September 26, 2018, at 7:35 PM local time at the Town Hall 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York to hear all interested persons regarding the 2019 Community Development Block Grant application. Input from citizens and groups is solicited regarding the town's application. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone 758-4606 so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated August 14, 2018, Sumacan Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook. And as always, it's published in the Poughkeepsie Journal. It's posted at the Town Hall. It's sent to the two villages. That's it.
Very good. Thank you very much, Sue. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this topic at the public hearing? Okay, very good. We do have one correspondence from Linda Keeling. She writes to us regarding the grant application. She discusses how the Town of Red Hook is proposing to do a challenger field addressing the need for accessible recreational opportunities for the disabled. The town's application will finally provide needed recreational space for those with challenging physical needs. She wants to point out, however, that at the Rec Park, we haven't accommodated these individuals. The bathrooms, and I think you heard me say we were awarded some grant monies to put towards that project and parking. And she talks about Poets Walk and so on and so forth. And I think that there have been some alterations to the entrance there, Poets Walk, and the pathways to accommodate those individuals. And goes on to talk about some other business establishments and talks about enforcement of those things. She believes that it's important to monitor any work that's being done for accessibility. So would anybody else like to chime in on this? If not, okay, I'd like to make the motion that we close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I. Okay, we'll be having a brief discussion about this, an item number two, this evening. We have a public hearing at 7:45, which I think we'll do now. And then we're going to jump over to Agenda Item Number Four, since we have a lot of folks here for the Tradition Development. So 7:45 public hearing is Local Law E., proposed of 2018, entitled "The Local Law Relating to the Red Church Cemetery." As I think I mentioned earlier, we inherited the Red Church Cemetery, a wonderful asset adjacent to the village of Tivoli. And through the guidance of many, and especially John Kuhn, we have taken over maintenance of that cemetery. And so we had to establish rules and regulations and pricing and also a law to enable us to do all those things. And that's what Local Law E. is all about. So Sue, do we have a notice for that as well?
We do. Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on September 26, 2018, at 7:45 PM local time at the Town Hall 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York to hear all interested persons on a proposed Local Law, Number E., proposed of 2018, entitled "A Local Law Relating to the Red Church Cemetery." The proposed Local Law would enact legislation to authorize the adoption of fees in connection with the Red Church Cemetery and to provide for adoption of rules and regulations for the proper operation of the cemetery, to provide for enforcement and to preserve the cemetery and discourage vandalism and damage to property. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed Local Law are available for review at the Town Hall 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone 758-4606 so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated September 11, 2018, Sumacan Town, or Town of Red Hook.
Very good. Thank you very much, Sue. At this time, I open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this? Okay, if not, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, very good. We're moving right along. We do have another public hearing at 7:55. That's for the establishment of the Hoffman TND Lighting District. Since we do have some time now, I think it'd be a good opportunity to introduce one of the folks working on this development. And that's Richard Rang. Richard, would you be kind enough to give the folks at home sort of a brief reminder of this development project, which was approved a few years ago?
Yes.
Yes, and now going to question.
It is, yes. Richard Rang, Kirchhoff Company. Joining me tonight is Jennifer Van Tyle, counsel, Alan Mottoli, and my engineer, Rob Morrison. As you indicated, the project was approved in August of 2016. And it's, it bodies the intent behind the traditional neighborhood development district. And, you know, certainly Christine Kane is very familiar. She was Planning Board Chair at the time. She's seen this project for quite a number of years. Yeah, we originally entered into contract with the owner of the property in 2007. In 2011, the town adopted their incentive green space plan and created the traditional neighborhood development zone as well as the incentive zoning legislation. The project takes into consideration the... Unfortunately, we didn't have this one electronically for you to be able to pull up. So the project implemented the incentive zoning regulations and will be making capital contributions to the fund that's set up for the preservation of land in the agricultural business district. And those funds will be provided to the town as we file individual section plots of the project. The project consists of 102 homes at a mix of single-family homes, cottage homes, and townhomes, meeting the requirements of the traditional neighborhood development district. And the first section of the project that we're going to develop is in and around this Central Park area that we're going to create. There'll be a small mail building, which will be a feature building at the entrance of the project. And if you recall, I'm sure Ms. Kane does, one of the original applications had a slightly different layout and had provided a corridor park through the site that we felt this provided more, a more integrated scenario in terms of bringing the project and its amenities into the overall community as opposed to having those open spaces and amenities, you know, deeper within the project. And we think by developing this first, it'll help to reinforce that field. The project, as I said, consists of 102 single-family homes and townhomes, a community center. This featured mail building, which will feel, look and feel like a post office. It won't be a post office. It's really a glorified mail kiosk. But we felt that this made it feel more like a community as opposed to just a kiosk on the side of the road. We didn't want to have rural route delivery and have those streets lined with mailboxes. Post office won't deliver door to door anymore. We thought this was an appropriate compromise. In addition, the, some of the other amenities on the project will have a playground area, dog park, a ball field, community gardens proposed, and then a series of walking trails and picnic areas on the property. Much of the open spaces on the property and some of the amenities are going to be available to the general public as well. This park area here will be open to the general public. This small passive park here will be. The trails will be open to the general public. And the ball field will be open to the general public through organized sports leagues, such, you know, such as a soccer club. Okay? What more can I tell you? We're, of the 52 acres, we're developing about, I believe it's about maybe 20 acres of the property. The balance of the property is reserved as open space. And some of it, you know, we have some wetland area back here that will be preserved as open space. All the roads right now are designed in accordance with the TND highway standards to meet those requirements. Sidewalks on both sides of the road, tree-lined streets. Many of the homes, particularly all the homes on the interior of the project will be served, their garages will be served by alleys. So you don't have a series of driveways crossing the road, you know, to access garages. So I think the streetscape is going to be much more inviting. All the homes are proposed to have front porches. They're going to be set close to the road. They're going to be set in an elevation such that someone sitting on their front porch can converse with someone walking on the sidewalk to try and foster that sense of, that sense of community. Certainly, the fact that the project is located in close proximity to some other amenities, the movie theater, Boldy Cow, of course, you know, we think it's going to promote a lot of mobility from the project to be able to, you know, frequent these establishments in the area. Infrastructure-wise, the boring part, you know, water and sewer. We're, we've entered into agreement along with the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority to purchase water from the village. And the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority is going to form a county zone of assessment, something maybe where other counties created a county-wide water district and formed zones of assessment to provide service to various areas. So all the costs associated with the operation and maintenance will be paid by the users, no cost to any, you know, municipal entity or even the county for that matter. Sewer will be provided through a series of conventional collection system, discharging ultimately to a subsurface wastewater disposal system. We have very, very good soils on the property and they're very conducive to that. Also, to be controlled by the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority. They'll provide all operation, maintenance, oversight billing, again, paid for by the users in the property. We've reached an agreement with the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority to do so. We have a signed memorandum of agreement with them now. And they're moving forward towards the formation of these, this Park County Sewer District and the Zone Assessment. What else can I tell you? Can't take reservations until, can't take lot reservations until after we get our Attorney General's approval on the offering plan.
I think we'd like you to have a building permit too.
We would love to get a building permit very soon. We will be, we will be pulling building permits for this for you and a townhouse structure.
Right.
And then two single-family home lots so that we can build models and we'll actually market from those models.
So Richard, I was wondering if I could impose upon you, I don't know how well Steve's camera can zoom in on that small map, but could you just show the folks at home a couple things? One, where Old Farm Road is, in case they're not oriented already from your map, and where Route 9 is. And also maybe just show them where that initial model home phase will be.
Absolutely. Hopefully, we're zoomed in enough. You can see my physical geography.
Can you see that more on the screen? What about on the big screen?
On the screen, I can certainly show you that on the screen. This obviously is Old Farm Road. And the project consists on the west side of Old Farm Road. Old Farm Road extends down to Route 9. This Lot 103 is actually the Hoffman Barn Sale. And Roger Hoffman's going to retain that and continue to maintain that operation. And right here would be the entrance to the movie theater. And you can see that, I'm not sure if you can zoom in, but you can see a little bit more of that. Here's the movie theater right here. Here's the Hoffman Barn Sale. Here's Route 9 here. Here is the Red Hook Land Court parcel, which, you know, unfortunately, I'm sure you all know, the building burnt down. And I believe they have an application before the planning board now to rebuild that. And I believe they're implementing the TND guidelines for that, to that development. We're very excited to see it happen because we think they'll benefit from the project and the project will benefit from having them in that area.
And is it great to say, yeah, it's hard. I'm glad you're here. You were all sort of working together, hopefully, on the water and the wastewater and figuring out how you can, if you can, partner together on all of that.
One of the, one of the features of the water system, when we make our connection here on Cambridge Drive, we're running a water main down Old Farm Road. That water main will actually be the property of the village. The village will retain ownership of that main. The mains within the project will be owned by the project and operated by the Water and Waste Water Authority. And then we have, we've worked a agreement with the village to extend that water main down so that it can provide service to other properties. But each service is gonna, will negotiate their use with the, with the village.
With the village. Very good. All right, well, I thought that was a pretty good summation. Any questions before we launch into our first public hearing?
Actually, either on that map or on the screen, can you just generally outline again for maybe the folks at home? It's a fairly large development, 102 units, as you said. And it's going to be implemented in eight separate stages. So maybe you can just sort of indicate where those, how those stages will work.
I can generally show you where they are, but we have a map that actually shows you exactly where they are. The first section is going to be most of these lots here, okay? And this loop road, okay? One of the comments we've gotten from the planning board is in each section, they didn't want to create any dead-end roads. And I think that might have been, you know, in respect to what the highway superintendent had pointed out. So this loop road would be in the first section. Section two includes these lots here and this road connection. Section three is actually some of the lots will have a frontage here and a couple of infill lots here. No particular infrastructure in that particular section. Four, I believe, is these lots in here and this loop road connection here. Five, I think, includes some of these lots through here. Again, very limited infrastructure required for that. Section six is the construction of this loop road and the creation of all the lots on the interior of that loop road. And seven, I believe, is the creation of lots through here. And eight would be the creation of these lots here. Again, since the infrastructure is principally in, very little infrastructure associated with those spaces.
And seven and eight are the, pretty much, the single-family homes?
Yeah, actually, the single-family homes are, I don't believe I have that planned with me, but the single-family homes are, and the cottage homes and the townhomes are actually intertwined within the project. We didn't want to have them in one particular location. But the majority of the lots on the exterior would be single-family homes for the most part because they're larger lots, could accommodate that. So you can see, yeah, I don't think it's going to be on any of these. These are all district-related maps. But you can see in some cases, like these lots right here would be a townhouse lot. You can see that they're much narrower lots because the product is attached. Some of the lots are narrower. These are all intended to be cottage lots around that court. We call that a cottage court. So those lots actually front on that green. In the middle of that green, we're proposing a fire pit, you know, for the community residents to be able to utilize. Again, we have more townhouse lots here. And then the rest of the cottage lots are, you know, dispersed throughout the whole project. Some of, some of the interior lots, even though they're alley-loaded, are single-family home lots. Some of them are cottage lots. But principally, the ones around the perimeter would be single-family homes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, for the review for the folks at home.
My pleasure.
All right, so we have a 7:55 public hearing. And that's establishing the Hoffman TND Lighting District. And just so the folks at home know, there are special benefit assessment districts. There are districts that are created so that the users of particular services can be charged for those services and not taxpayers in general. And so the TND Lighting District needs to be created for this development. So Sue, do you have a public hearing notice for this one?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on September 26 at 7:40, 7:55 PM local time at the Town Hall 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York to hear all interested persons on the establishment of the Hoffman TND Lighting District and the improvements proposed therefor and to consider the petition, map, and plan filed in relation thereto. The estimated annual expense for the proposed district is $600 and $672 as set forth in the map, plan, and report. And the estimated annual charge to a typical one- or two-family home with an assessed value of $350,000 in the first year of operation following construction is $28.61 with no proposed hookup fee. The planning board previously classified the action as type one action and adopted a negative declaration on March 16, 2015, determining that the proposed action would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disability. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone 758-4606 so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated September 11, 2018, Sumacan Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Sue. We had a little technical difficulty there, but hopefully we'll get that corrected. Rod, what I was thinking is maybe we could jump right into the next public hearing, which is the Backup Storm Drainage District scheduled for 8 o'clock.
Either way.
Do all the public hearings at once? And then we can start talking about all this. Does that work for you?
Yeah, sure.
Good. All right, so at this time, would anybody like to comment on that establishment of the lighting district? Public hearing, okay. Hearing on. I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor, just before you close it, I just want to comment for the record that we did receive a minor modification to the report, which clarified a couple of numbers. It did not change any of the numbers that were in the public hearing notice. It reconfigured numbers that were used to derive the electrical cost, which showed up in the late-out years of the chart explaining the numbers. So we have that on file with the clerk's office. I just want to make that note.
Yep, and we received that minor correction. Thank you, Chris, very much for your help. Jennifer. Okay, so there's a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have now the 8 o'clock public hearing. That's establishing the Hoffman TND Backup Storm Drainage District. And Sue, do we have a public notice?
We do. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on September 26, 2018, at 8 o'clock PM local time at the Town Hall 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York to hear all interested persons on the establishment of the Hoffman TND Backup Storm Drainage District and the improvements proposed therefor and to consider the petition, map, and plan filed in relation thereto. The estimated annual expense for the proposed district is $19,950 as set forth in the map, plan, and report. And the annual charge to a typical one- or two-family home with an assessed value of $350,000 in the first year of operation following construction is estimated to be $196,000 with no proposed hookup fee. The planning board previously classified the action as type one action and adopted a negative declaration on March 16, 2015, determining that the proposed action would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disability. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone 758-4606 so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated September 11, 2018, Sumacan Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Sue. Would anybody like to speak on this issue? This is Backup Storm Drainage District. And Chris, could I ask you to explain to the folks at home why we need a Backup Storm Drainage District?
Yeah, good question. So the purpose of this is really because the drainage that's created to serve the district is also serving roads that are, require their own drainage. And because they are doing a double duty, what's going to happen practically is that the HOA is going to be responsible for maintaining those. However, because they do impact the roads, the town needed a mechanism by which it could bill the homeowners if it wasn't properly maintained for the benefit of the maintenance of the town roads. So that's really the reason for the, for the system.
Good. All right. No one wants to speak on this topic? So I will make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got our last public hearing for tonight, eight oh five. It's establishing the Hoffman TND backup sidewalk district. And Sue, I assume there's a public notice for this as well?
There is. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Red Hook on September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, at eight oh five P M. local time at the town hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on the establishment of the Hoffman TND backup sidewalk district and the improvements proposed thereof, and to consider the petition, map, and plan filed in relation thereto. The estimated annual expense for the proposed district is eleven thousand seven hundred dollars as set forth in the map, plan, and report. And the annual charge to a typical one or two family home with an assessed value of three hundred and fifty thousand in the first year of operation following construction is estimated to be one hundred and fifteen dollars with no proposed hookup fee. The planning board previously classified the action as a type one action and adopted a negative declaration on March sixteen, two thousand and fifteen, determining that the proposed action would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the town board, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disability. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, seven five eight four six zero six, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the town board of the town of Red Hook, dated September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, Sue McCann, town clerk, town of Red Hook.
Okay, very good. Um, would anybody like to speak on this issue? Chris, any further explanation on what a backup sidewalk district does?
Sure, well, I would say this really stems from the fact that we have in our TND district, um, sidewalks which are intended to be part of the HOA maintained structure. However, because, uh, the public rights of way have to be a certain width, uh, the sidewalks aren't necessarily gonna be inside of that right of way. So if and when the town takes the roads, and it's intended that the roads are designed so that when this project is substantially built out, they would be dedicated as public roads, at that point, then, the town would be generally responsible for dealing with things in the right of way. And so it's intended that the backup sidewalk district is really only there to the extent, again, that the HOA does not maintain the facilities and the town needs a way to, um, address the cost of that, uh, within the scope of the district that's supposed to be paying for it.
Right, that's to protect the taxpayers from paying for a benefit that they don't receive because they don't reside in that district. Okay, very good. Um, hearing, no comments for this public hearing. I make a motion to close, um, the eight oh five public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So why don't we, um, we're gonna skip to agenda item number four. Um, Rod, did you want to show us any of these visuals for either the lighting district, storm drainage district, or the sidewalk district?
Each of those three, they mentioned, these three, first three slides are the same. They're in essence, in the map plan reports, they are the benefit district that's established. They are very simply the residential lots within the Traditions Project. So if anything further, we'd simply repeat what you said. It establishes that the, the people to, uh, to receive the benefit are the ones who would be assessed both normally in the lighting district and, let's say, unfortunately, in the case if the town had to invoke the storm drainage or the sidewalk district.
And now we get to the exciting part.
This is good stuff.
That being told.
There are two slides here which really explain the portion of the project where we, uh, we configure the outflow of the storm drainage that exists for Old Farm Road that's been in place since, that's best that we can tell, late nineteen eighties. That line for Old Farm Road was built literally just diagonally across the old men farm fields at the time, uh, bringing the outlet to the corner where the stream existed. Um, that stream, and if I can leave the microphone, I guess. Hey, it's Westburg, uh, up here through the rural community development. This is one private property and then it goes into the lands of the Waste Authority where the water facility is. Historically, that stream came across Route Nine. It came underneath what became the Lyceum Cinemas and Hoffman's barn area. And all that flow was piped, uh, when those projects were, were built, at whatever date that they were built. So anyway, um, well, maybe back at that time, that was sufficient. Uh, through the several iterations and development that originally described that we ended up at, it became evident to us that it would be good to reconfigure that storm drainage line. It would let us create the alignment that we wanted to in the TND project. As well, uh, during the, during the design process, with the town engineer and with the homeowner out there, it was evident that there is history of, of, uh, surging of that stream area. It was not evident exactly which side it was coming from, but the fact is that, that it does come through there. So what we suggest that we can do in reconfiguring the storm line is insert a couple of good drywalls in that new line. Uh, as Richard indicated and as all our tests show, we have fabulous soil out there. Uh, we think that with the reconfigured line, uh, one, you'll have a brand new municipal line which goes out, which is, will be easy to maintain, but there'll also be a couple of good drywalls on there which will help alleviate any of that, uh, any of that flooding that through their stream corridor in their backyard. So it was, I think, and Chris may add too, that we thought all that was a benefit for, it was a win-win scenario for both homeowner, uh, and our projects and the town.
And you feel confident you have the infrastructure size for what the future is? Or the present day is bringing us these two?
Yes, the, uh, that line is really, it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, we don't add any flow to it. It is simply the Old Farm Road drainage itself. Um, as a result of us doing our project, we take our drainage and infiltrate it throughout the property and elsewhere. So we don't bring any additional flow to that area, so it should be a good benefit.
I know for any reason I'm here, but she did review that and she sent her review memo to the board to confirm that she had reviewed it. Um, and I think she also reviewed it with the highway super as well. So we got a letter from both of them recommending that that realignment is, is
Works.
Okay, to be approved, right.
We thank them both for their review work on, on this on behalf of the town. Okay. Why don't we, um, cover some other topics? If you like, or we can take a look at, shall we take a look at the order establishing the lighting district? Maybe we should do that.
Yeah, so you have four, you have three different districts. So you have three different, um, orders to establish each of those districts individually. Uh, so you have to take those in turn, yes.
Yeah, and I think I have everything in the correct order, but if I don't, I apologize. I think the first packet you have here is the resolution. The final order establishing, oh, I'm sorry, authorizing establishment of the Hoffman TND lighting district. And attached to the resolution itself is Exhibit A, which has the survey dimension.
That's correct, because when we're establishing a district, we literally establish a line around, uh, the areas that are benefited.
As I surveyed, uh. Okay. Um, provided to us is, uh, as Chris referenced and so did Rod, is, uh, the map, plan, and report for the lighting district, uh, prepared for Red Hook Acres LLC, dated November tenth, two thousand and sixteen, and revised just the other day, September twenty-fourth. Do you have any questions about that? Rod, I can see the folks at home wanting to know what kind of streetlights are gonna be involved with, with the development. Could you maybe just touch on that for a second, just?
Sure, um, the, in working through, to do that, you really have to go back to the TND, how the TND code was created and what was it, what it was intended to do and the vision for the streetscapes that it wanted. And we've worked very hard throughout to, to make that happen. There's been a huge investment and study of architecture. I'm sure Rich would talk a lot about that. Um, the streetscape itself, uh, with, as Rich very well described, the ability to sit on a porch, talk to people on the sidewalk. Um, along with that comes some, some measure of street lighting. And, uh, it isn't, it isn't the kind that's mounted to a pole thirty feet high strictly for safety. It's, it's to really affect a connection between, uh, the people on the porches, the people walking on the sidewalks in a very, in a very friendly way, I think that's fair to say. We ended up selecting through, I think we mounted six, seven, eight different types of fixtures. Uh, but they're lower mounted, uh, decorative fixtures. There are twenty-seven of them throughout the project. Uh, they're located at key intersections. Um, the lighting level was very seriously scrutinized by the planning board, uh, which caused us to change some of them more. Uh, but part of that was a good outgrowth of, of us going to with LED lighting. And there is, as you know, LED lighting, uh, in the beginning was extremely bright and kind of unmanaged. Uh, but as it's evolved, we have a very nice, uh, I guess, traditional, uh, light coloration to it. So those specific fixtures, like I said, are fairly low mounted. There's twenty-seven of them throughout the intersections. Uh, I think they fit really nicely with the architecture. Uh, we have a lighting plan in our project files, which is not available to us at the moment. But yeah, that's what they are, nice decorative fixtures at intersections and, uh, helps create the, the feeling of neighborhood rather than through street.
And we know that in the lighting report, um, after discussion, uh, with the town engineer, it was decided that the lighting report would make reference to the planning board's approved lighting plan that they spent a lot of time going through and developing as part of the process and that these documents would work together.
Are they ground mounted, um, like ground mounted poles?
Yes, they are.
And they're in the top of the pole?
Uh, yes, the fixtures.
And on what's aside?
They do not hang up the side, yeah, they sit on the, on the top of the pole.
So, so they're not, they're not the power poles, yeah?
They are not.
And where are the power lines?
All our conduits underground.
All right, okay.
All of that's been very, very nicely, thoroughly done by the project team.
And if I can add, um, Central Hudson Gas and Electric was very accommodating with respect to the layout for the electric distribution through the system, um, whereby we were able to put most of the transformers actually in the alleys so that the streetscape is not littered with transformers because with the number of homes, they'd be setting transformers every few homes along the streetscape. So we felt that they were very, very helpful in terms of being able to accommodate us to put those in the, in the alleyways, so.
And then the light fixtures also meet the town's code for shielding and dark sky guidelines.
Yes, they do.
Good. And for the public's, um, benefit, just so you know, we establish through the work of our engineer and our attorney, a bond amounts, and so developers are required to put up, uh, bonds to ensure that if they don't complete the work as described, that we have the money to go ahead and, and do that up their behalf. So, uh, any further questions about the lighting district? Is there anything we've missed? If not, um, I would entertain this resolution authorizing establishment of the Hoffman TND lighting district. It would be resolution number?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six of two thousand and eighteen. And I so move, sorry, second. Okay, thank you, Aaron. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move right into the exciting discussion of backup storm drainage. And I think that, um, you've sort of given us a very exciting report on that, Rod. And so we might be able to, uh, go right into our resolution here. This would be resolution number fifty-seven of two thousand and eighteen. It's a final order authorizing establishment of the Hoffman TND backup storm drainage district. Um, and there are a bunch of wherases, which, uh, I'll reference the date of approval, which is August fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Pursuant to those resolutions, Roger Hoffman, the owner in Red Hook Acres LLC, the developer, um, have development project of a hundred and two lots, residential community. And, uh, they are establishing with our consent, a backup drainage district. And, uh, they are placing a bond to secure that work. And the public hearing was held this evening at eight P M. September twenty-sixth. And so it is hereby ordered that the town board of the town of Red Hook approve the establishment of the Hoffman TND backup storm drainage district, and I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd just say we, that this is where we want it to be boring, but also know that we've put all the work in. Thank you for, for doing that, and we hope nobody ever has to think about this again, that it all just flows the way it's supposed to, and it's good that it's there in case we need it, so thanks.
And it's a great addition to the town.
Okay. So, um, thank you very much. Um, I think we voted on that, so.
No, we didn't.
We did, we're about to. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about backup sidewalk districts. And this is resolution number fifty-eight. And Rod, did, do you feel we covered where the sidewalks will be? Or can we do that? Or Richard, would you like to do that? Could you just show us where the sidewalks would be, please, on the map?
I, I, um, it's, it's actually pretty straightforward because.
It might work better on the screen. I can blow it up for you a little bit more.
Generally, generally, wherever you see a road.
Okay.
You'll have sidewalk on both sides of that road.
Okay.
Okay, there'll be a seven foot tree lawn, a landscape lawn with trees spaced, uh, incremental spacing throughout the, the project. Um, and the sidewalks will be approximately a foot in from the adjoining property lines into the, into the town's, uh, future right of way. So you'll have sidewalks on both sides of the road through here. In this area here, um, the sidewalk actually goes through the open space parcel, okay? Um, so it's pretty much along the frontage here, but you have that little narrow parkland, so you'll have a much wider tree island, so to speak, between the, uh, the sidewalk and the streetscape. Um, and then we also have sidewalks that move through here. The district itself is really only related to the sidewalks that are within the proposed town right of way, however. So any of the sidewalks on the project that extend beyond the town right of way are not part of the district's responsibility.
Okay, so it's Old Farm Road headed towards nine?
Well, Old Farm Road through here are, are going to be the district's responsibility, but the extension of, of the sidewalk down towards Route Nine would not be.
Right. Very good. And did you want to say anything about the roads themselves, one way, two way?
Well, all.
In case people are inquiring?
All the roads in the project, with the exception of this one here, are two-way. This road here is a one-way in.
Okay.
Okay, um, and, uh, we think that's, that's one of the reasons why we focused our marketing efforts on these homes here. People would come in, they'll park this on-street parking on the roads. There'll be on-street parking in front of the, uh, um, the units so we don't have to have a parking lot for, you know, for the sales center necessarily. Um, and that will accommodate the access to the, to that marketing. And we feel that this section right here is gonna really set the tone for the overall project in that, you know, all of these lots are overlooking this parkland. I think that's really gonna create the, the desirability for the, for the project and the success of the project.
Yeah, that plot doesn't, doesn't show the alleys in the back.
Not on here. This one, this one here does show the alleys behind the alleys.
The garages will be entered from the alleys.
Entered from the alley, and I, I can, yeah, this one shows some of them as well. All, all of the lots on the interior of the road system will be, will be alley loaded, including the ones that are facing Old Farm Road. Um, these lots through here, even though they're on the perimeter, we are going to extend that alley behind these lots because we didn't want those driveway curb cuts along this, this area here in the vicinity of the park. Um, but all these lots here, because we didn't want to, we didn't want to bring the vehicle in an alley towards the open space. We wanted to keep that as, as, you know, private backyards to the open space. These will be front-loaded. Some of the homes, depending upon homeowner's selection, may have their garage in the rear if that's what they wanted, and the driveway would just go around the house to the garage in the rear. These here, we certainly didn't want to bring an alley to the back because it would also be an alley behind these homes. And we didn't feel that that was fair to the adjoining property owners, so. So these driveways here will also be off of the main road.
Is there anything you wanted to mention while you're up? Did you want to talk about maintenance of the properties? I mean, I know part of the discussion is that, um, the development may include some maintenance, uh, features?
Yeah, um, I think I might have mentioned earlier, we've been working with the, uh, with, with an attorney to develop our homeowners association documents, the offering plan for the project. It will be the homeowners association's responsibility for the maintenance, as was indicated with backup sidewalk district, for all the sidewalks through the project, for the alleyways, and principally for all the lawn areas as well. So the desirability of a, is that right? The desirability of, of the community to, to someone who always want to be married to the constant maintenance of their property, I think is gonna be there. Um, there'll be the potential for some, you know, snowbirds perhaps might want to live here. They lock their door, they go away, they don't have to worry about shovel in the driveway and plow in the snow on the sidewalk. It's all taken care of as part of the association's dues.
Very good, thank you, Richard.
Well.
Thank you, Richard. So where did we leave off?
Fifty-eight.
So, Rod?
We're on the backup sidewalk district, so that would be resolution fifty-eight.
Right, so we ready to move this resolution? Excuse me? That would be resolution number fifty-eight. And again, it has the same language. This has been filed in the town clerk's office on August twenty-second. It references the approval date of August fifteenth, twenty sixteen. Again, with the survey. Exhibit A and exhibit C. Establishment of backup sidewalk district with a bond. Eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars estimated annual expense. And I so move resolution fifty-eight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're getting even more exciting stuff, relocating drain easement. And who would like to speak on that issue? Just very briefly, Rod?
I did describe that earlier. The intent is to relocate the existing town storm drainage outfall from Old Farm Road into a new easement, utilize building new pipes, new dry wells, and outletting it to, to the same location.
Okay, very good. So we have a resolution now fifty-nine. The date is September twenty-sixth. Referencing the same dates. And referencing the sequel review, which was done in March of twenty thirteen. That's how long these projects take, and you're wondering. An I so move resolution fifty-nine authorizing the relocation of drainage easement regarding Hoffman TND. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we have an offer of session.
Yeah, maybe you'd like me to work on that one.
So could you, for the folks at home, I think we're all up here familiar with this procedure, but maybe describe what happens when the developer comes in and builds a road?
Right, well, we haven't had that many lately in Red Hook, but we've had many over the years. So the process for this involves really looking forward to when the project is complete and improvements that are designed to be, public improvements such as the roads in particular, and certain drainage improvements. And, and other facilities are eventually to be dedicated to the town. Whether or not they're dedicated to the town, they're structured and designed so that they meet town road specs, so that the town can take them over at some point. And in this case, it's intended they be taken over at a certain point in the process. This resolution speaks only to be section one because this plat is being filed in sections. So section one is, I think Richard described that a little bit earlier, generally the, the homes around the loop, the first little loop road. So this process involves establishing what's called an irrevocable offer of session, which is a promise to the town with a copy of a deed that's been executed and held in escrow. Here's the deed that we will be able to go and record if we want to, but that would be at a later date because the intent would be you would not accept the deed in your discretion until the road is properly completed. This also provides for the establishment of a bond in an amount determined by your engineer to be sufficient to cover the cost of completing the road. Those numbers were provided by developers, engineer reviewed by our engineer and our highway superintendent. So we have, excuse me, we have several of those offers of session. We have one for the roads, Beekman Road, Benson Loop, Livingston Street, that are this little original loop. And then we have an access easement, which is necessary during this first period so that access to the lighting area could be granted for that first area. And then snow storage, as Teresa pointed out, when this first area is done, until the other loops are done, if we were to take this first part of the road, need a place to put snow. So that snow storage easement is created for that. And then a stormwater easement similarly. There's a stormwater feature, Rod, is that what those crosshedges are showing? That the top part of the park area up there?
Stormwater practices.
Where the first section that-
This one's, this one's, yeah, yes.
There's a subsurface stormwater facility in that location, and that's what the easement is, associated with the backup stormwater district. In the event that the association didn't maintain it, the district can come in and maintain it. You would need an easement to be able to do that, access that property.
What about the snow storage easement?
Snow storage easement here is at the end of Benson Loop, temporary snow storage. So at the time that the town would accept this road, the town has someplace that they could store the snow in the interim.
So then we have, we have on file letters from the highway superintendent and the town engineer that identify the expected costs. We also have another letter from the town engineer that identifies the expected inspection costs because that's another element of these. We will have to be on-site reviewing and inspecting the road as it's constructed in accordance with the town highway specifications to make sure that at the end of the day, they can say, yes, this is constructed, and advise Teresa that it was properly constructed. Of course, she will be inspecting it as well on a periodic basis. Then we have, so we have a performance bond, an indemnity, which is a provision for a promise by the developer to be responsible for costs in connection with, with the construction of the road, forms of the deeds. Then we also have copies of Dutchess County Water and Wastewater agreements provided to you. And that is because one of the things that you, as the town board, are doing is looking at the things that are public improvements and assuring yourselves that there are bonds adequate to provide for their construction. Though some of those public improvements are the water and wastewater system, those are being proposed to be constructed by the developer and operated by the Water and Wastewater Authority. So they went to the Water and Wastewater Authority and actually approved, received approval today for those agreements with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. And they have a pre-existing agreement executed with the village board for the provision of the water source. So they now have those agreements in place, so that's what you have on file to review. So the bonds that are provided for those will actually be held by Dutchess County Water, but they will have dual equity for the town so that the town can also be assured in accordance with your subdivision regulations that these improvements will be made in accordance with the plans. Then we have other conditions to, to your approval will include the inspection fees escrow, consultant, consultant fees of your escrow provisions. And then you have your incentive zoning fee, which Richard alluded to. That is seventy thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars for the first phase of this development based on the incentive zoning code provision. And then finally, the, you know, the subdivision maps will need to be completed and filed. So the planning board is looking at a whole list of the conditions that they imposed as a, as a result of your site plan and subdivision rules. So you're only looking at these limited issues about completion of public improvements, okay?
And can you just remind me when, what the final decision was for when the Water and Wastewater Authority would take over the operation?
Yeah.
Was it based on number of units? Is that what it had been?
The Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority will actually assume full authority over the system, and our agreement, the operating agreement will come into play prior to the first home being served. So before the first home is served-
Oh, so they're going to do it from the first one?
They're going to, they're going to actually be in charge of this system, yes.
Oh, good, because that wasn't really what they were thinking years ago.
Well, what we concluded, I think, is that in the absence of that, they would have had to create a subdivision corporation.
Right.
Which I think they didn't want to have to do if Dutchess County was going to do it to begin.
Right, okay.
Your question goes to ownership as well, right? Because I think it's going to be owned by the developer?
Yes.
And then potentially some, sometime down the future, maybe?
The, the operating agreement with the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority is, allows for them to lease the system from, from, you know, the owner, us. And until a point in time when they want to actually acquire it. Because they don't want to acquire the system, they don't want to own the system until it's built out and has the users to support it. So it's until that point in time before they're going to exercise it. And our agreement, and they did a very, very good job of negotiating with us, our agreement with Water and Wastewater Authority, that of that lease payment that they'll be paying us, which is collected by the users in the system, fifty percent of that lease payment is actually applied to the purchase price. So it actually draws down that purchase price to a point when they will be in, you know, they will choose to bond to purchase the system because it will reach a point in time when that would be less expensive for the users than the continued payment of the lease.
So again, upfront, the proposal, which is fairly unusual for Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, that they developed for this project because of the phase, I think because of the phase nature of the development and the, the need for development of the, I think, a pretty substantial portion of the, at least the wastewater disposal upfront, right? Because just in the nature of it-
A minimum of a third of the system will be built upfront, so.
Right, even though there's only a very few units being served. So the agreement with Water and Wastewater Authority is originally an MOU, which will then be replaced by at least when the first unit is put online, right? So the unit can't be put online and served with wastewater services unless, and water services, unless Dutchess County is, is in, is in that leasehold situation. And so they will be operating because they are going to be the entity holding the permit to operate the facility. That's what their agreement provides for.
So that means that you have to construct the, the plant in phase one also?
It's not a plant, was it?
A third, a third of the, of the system will be constructed, at a minimum, a third of the system will be constructed in phase one. We, it was designed to be in three different sections in terms of construction. And we, we worked diligently with Rodney's office and the Dutchess County Health Department and the Water and Wastewater Authority to show how that was going to be phased. So a minimum of, of a third of the system is constructed in phase one. I believe it's in phase five, four, that the second third of the system would have to be constructed. And by phase seven, the third third has to be constructed.
Right. So, and that's the, you know, infrastructure under the roads and the piping, you know?
The, the infrastructure under the roads will be developed as we build the roads. But I was referring to the actual facilities themselves, the, the, the primary clarification, the dosing chamber, and the subsurface disposal system will be built out, at, at a minimum, in those three phases. We, we do have the right to, we could choose to build it out faster, depending upon how big it is with construction, so.
So that's not, you know, so in your lease-to-own agreement with Water, Wastewater, you can, you can do that at a different state, uh, speed? If that allows for that to happen?
The, the lease arrangement that we have in the, in the, and Al, you can correct me if I, if I, if I misspeak, is no, there's no lease payment by any lot owner and no lease payment coming to us until a, a unit is connected. And that lease payment remains the same regardless of how much of the system is built. We were, we struggled with a few things. Number one, trying to keep, you know, the cost reasonable to, to the users. And number two, trying to set it up such that we didn't end up in a situation where, you know, we have three or four users connected and you have all this operation and maintenance expense associated with it, so those users would end up paying that, or having them pay a fixed amount of a lease and having to, having to divide it amongst fewer users. So ultimately, the way it ended up being is, as a unit's connected, they will then be assessed an operation and maintenance charge by the Water and Wastewater Authority. If they're, if it's for the water and they're using water, they'll be getting a charge for their usage based upon the agreement that the Water and Wastewater Authority had entered into with the village. And then there'll be another fee for the lease that is only paid once you're connected. So the lots that are undeveloped, the lots that are built but not yet connected, those, those lots will not be paying any portion of the cost.
So it's users, actually?
Yes, it's users of the system. Probably a better way of explaining it.
And, and the DCWWA has the right to acquire it after something like eighty-four users, is that?
They actually have the right to acquire it at any point in time. I doubt they would acquire it until we built it out.
But not for a dollar, keep in mind.
Right.
You know, for a market rate.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the cost, cost of construction.
We've actually set a price point on both the water and the wastewater facilities that's actually below market value. But the lease agreement has set that they can buy it for market value or the lesser number of the, the price that we set.
Thank you very much. So we have some water bond calculation as well.
Right, and those came from Dutchess County Water. One for water and one for sewer. And then up in the beginning part, you're going to see the number for the remainder, so that other bond that you can help by account would be for all of the other improvements, the roads and so forth. Again, only for section one.
Right.
Only for section one.
Thanks, Doc.
Does anyone have any questions about that before we entertain this resolution? Very good. So this would be resolution number sixty, I believe, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Dated September twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. It's a resolution regarding offers of session for roads and easements for the Hoffman subdivision, section one. And it references the approval of resolution granting site plan approval for the Hoffman property traditional neighborhood development back on August fifteenth, twenty sixteen. It references approval resolutions between Roger Hoffman and Red Hook Acres LLC. It references the offers that our attorney to the town has already described, which is the offer to dedicate parcels or parcels of land for highway purposes or drainage easements as shown here on many of the diagrams. And developer has submitted for approval, the irrevocable offer of session and dedication for Beekman Road, Benson Loop, and Livingston Street. I'll stop there. Did you know what I'm about to say? I've already had plenty of people say to me, there's a Livingston in Reinbeck. You're going to create a lot of confusion.
There's a Livingston in every town I've, ever lived in.
Market Street, there's Broadway, there's Main Street.
Okay. I'll put it out there, Richard. I'll put it out there.
Yep, yeah, for the board's education, although we don't want to change it now because it requires us to go through an extensive process with the county and the planning board and the town board. We are looking into changing it once we've established all the approvals and we get started on the project, so. We are looking into alternative names that we might be able to propose to the county and the town board to see if we can change that name, so. We just thought it was a very good name because it's, it's a historically significant name, right?
We, we understand, but you'd be surprised at how many people come into the town of Red Hook who don't actually want to come here because they're looking for the village of Red Hook or the village of Tivoli or something that's in Reinbeck.
Or the town of Red Hook, which, in, in Brooklyn, which is not a town.
That's really far away.
It isn't a town at all.
Okay, so we're talking about an MOU with DCWWA as well. We're talking about dollar amounts of several hundred thousand dollars for water and sewer reviewed by our town engineer, reviewed by our highway superintendent as well. Be it further resolved that the supervisor town engineer, attorney for the town, and superintendent of highways may take all steps reasonable and necessary in consultation with the attorney for the town to implement the intent of this resolution. I so move resolution number sixty.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Well, this has been both exciting and terribly boring at the same time. But I'm not surprised. We have an engineer, an attorney, we've got, right, a developer. We've got all of the above. Anyway, we thank you very much for all the information that you provided. And I know that you've been working diligently to get the documents ready for us. And quite frankly, it was very hard to keep up with all the stuff that was coming at us. If you want to see what the stock is, it's about that thick. Chris, we, we thank you very much for all the work that you did.
And I think we'd just like to express our thanks to the town's consultant and the highway engineer. There's a lot of work behind the scenes to get all these documents together. And we met weekly for a long time to work through all the documents. And your consultants were always accessible and did a great job for the town. But we appreciate them cooperating and getting us to this point, as well as the board's cooperation.
Thank you, yes, we're very lucky. Thank you for, for your time, of course. So I've got some bad news. It's raining very hard out there. Thank you all very much for, for coming tonight.
When does the shovel go in the ground?
Right.
We have a couple of things we have to address with the planning board here, but we're anticipating very soon. We're actually hoping a couple of months ago, but we're hopefully get, get this. We'd like to try and get the foundation- We're actually hoping a couple of months ago, but we're, hopefully get this, get this, we'd like to try and get the foundations for the models in so we can get them weather tight, so we can finish them during the winter. And have our grand opening in the, uh-
You may, you may do it before we need the snow shovel.
We hope to be doing a lot of it before we do snow.
Hope it's a nice warm fall, right, like last year.
For a lot of reasons.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Yep. Okay, so if we may jump back to agenda item number one, that's-
We lost, good.
Seven, we're, we're ahead here.
Well, we're going, we're starting at the beginning, Eric. Agenda item number one, and that's all of our audits that we received?
Can we move the highway thing up?
Oh, yes, we can move the highway thing up, sure. Why not, since we've jumped around? Thank you for suggesting it very much. So that would be agenda item number eight. Each and every year, we go out to bid for many things. But the most regular of those things is for all the materials that we use for highway purposes. And Teresa, did you want to say anything or would you like us just to go ahead and dispense with the resolution to go out to bid?
No, it's pretty straightforward. It's the same thing we do every year. The dates are changed.
Right.
We're very fortunate in getting good results, but we put these bids out.
So we have place off state contract and things like that. We have something to compare them to.
Did you want to, as I search for my paperwork, did you want to talk about some of those possibilities like county contracts for salt and those kinds of things? Maybe the folks at home aren't familiar with some of the options that we have for our materials.
Well, what we don't bid for in these material bids is salt. And typically, we purchase salt off of the state contract. And a couple of years ago, the state contract pricing was extremely high. So the county invited the towns in Dutchess County to get together with them and put in a bid for a county contract. And that year, we saved over fifteen dollars a ton. And when you're using eleven hundred tons, it, it makes quite a bit of difference. And this year, again, the state contract pricing has come down, but there's a six-dollar difference between our current county contract being lower. So we're still fortunate. The unfortunate part is that Dutchess County is located in an area of the state which makes it difficult to deliver salt to. So where we may be paying seventy-four dollars a ton, somebody else in the state will be paying fifty-three dollars a ton. It's just location.
Has it gone further?
Yeah, further from the mines and, you know, it, it's a struggle for us because we see what other people can bid. But it's broken up into regions and, and Dutchess County, Franklin County have the highest cost for salt.
Well, I was looking for the attachment. I can't find it to put, for the folks at home. But I will just read of the items that we are going out to bid. As usual, that's hot mix asphalt abrasives for snow and ice control, all types of cold mix patch, stone dust processed, dynam four screen filled, rip wrap, those are those rocks used to stabilize. Gabion stone, crushed stone, washed gravel, topsoil, uh, abloom trucking operator for tree removal and trucking for crushed stone and abrasive sand. And we have a resolution here to authorize the town clerk to advertise a request for sealed bids. All these bids are sealed.
Well, I'm sorry, just to correct you, that, sorry, the, the two of the bids are sealed. The larger projects here are the ice control abrasives and the hot mix asphalt. But there are a whole number of items that they use an RFP for because they're smaller items, smaller budget items, but they still, Teresa, over the years, has gone over all of these with, with Ted and developed the number of items that they need individually. So they're priced individually and they take the low bid for each of those items. Under their RFP, I'm sorry, I just want to make that clear.
It's now a part thing, yeah?
Yes. A menu, exactly.
Yep. Resolution number sixty-one, authorizing the town clerk to advertise a request for sealed bids for the purchase of ice control abrasives, a request for sealed bids for hot mix asphalt, and a request for proposals for various other materials and services for twenty nineteen and I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a, no, you can vote, but then I have a question.
Thanks. Well, maybe one other question for, um, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
So we have the new town website. We have capability of putting the bids right on the website. Does that have to wait until the newspaper ad is published or can it be done? Because it takes a couple of days for the newspaper ad to appear.
No, as long as your specs are on file with the town clerk, you can go ahead and post it on the website.
Okay, so-
You're not talking about the bids, you're talking about the request?
Right.
The request, yes. Well, we just say, people will call me and say, oh, the bid's out.
Right, as long as, as long as they're on file with the clerk's office, then, then they can be posted.
So as soon as I send them to Sue, then we can put them on the website?
Right, just make sure that you're going through Sue and you're, or whoever the coordinator is for posting on the website for those kinds of things, to make, coordinate with her to make sure that you both have the same document, right?
So would be a, then you do the advertisement, is that considered a, a, a press release?
Well, we can take care of the website stuff. We can discuss that later, but just make sure Sue has it because it's, it's the formal procedure.
Okay, then you get an official.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. And then we can take care of how it gets released.
Okay.
I'm not sure it's-
They even put the specs on the website because then they can just take them themselves.
Yep.
I'm not sure every resident needs or wants to be notified of bids of that nature. But we could do some type of press release on the website as opposed to a direct contact with all the residents on it. But that stuff we could-
You mean using the function of the website that tells the world?
Right, the one that distributes to everybody.
If you sign up.
Right. We, we just want to be careful we don't overload them. We've been, as we've been working the website, we've been accidentally messaging them a few times for the same thing. So we apologize if that's happened to you. All right, um, moving, moving on to number one. Okay, number one.
Nice.
And that is accepting the audit reports. So each year, we have an auditor come in and they audit our departments. They audit the justice courts, they audit the town clerk, tax collector, they audit the general funds as well. And so we get reports from our auditor, Lori Doty, and we have those tonight. Did you all have any questions about those?
They look good to me.
That's good, okay. Good. All right. And so town justice courts, tax collector, town clerk. We also had an, an audit, just so, uh, the folks know, we have a lot of federal money that was a part of a grant for the sidewalk project here on the east side of Route Nine. And because that project was of a certain dollar amount, it's required that we have an audit of that as well to ensure that we spent those funds wisely. And that is also included here in the audit documents. So we have five audit reports, and that's resolution number sixty-two dated September twenty-sixth.
Sorry, just a question. Is it, um, is it possible to ask her to not bind them this way? Because this is a lot of non-recyclable material here that, assuming we don't all want to like keep the audit report forever and ever and under our pillows or whatever, just so that we want- How many, how many copies of this? If we get, and it's five of them, it's just a lot of plastic binding.
I'm amazed about it like this.
Certainly ask that they just be emailed in the future, except for the one official copy for the clerk.
Yep.
Right, and then maybe, right, official copy, if you want the beautiful binding, whatever.
I don't need binding, actually.
I just, yeah, a nice paperclip or staple does the trick.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
It's a fancy paper, too.
All right, uh, resolution number sixty-two and I so move.
Second.
It's accepting audit reports dated September tenth, twenty eighteen, for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a brief discussion on the twenty nineteen community development block grant application. Just so you all know the deadlines, we have until October nineteenth to file this application. We have discussed in the past, applying for more money for finishing off bathroom retrofit, some pathways, developing pathways to remove barriers on an existing wrecked park. And the folks that administer that program in the county are excited about us submitting that type of an application. But do we have other ideas that we would like to discuss tonight or?
That was the idea that I sent you, so.
Right.
After I read through it.
So if not, you know, we'll, we'll take this up again at our next meeting. Maybe other ideas will come up for consideration. Otherwise, it would behoove us to put together an application and use it on those important efforts. And so we're actually going to have some of the folks that administer the program come take a look at wrecked park and see all the barriers. And they're going to be aware of what we're doing with the playground, they'll look for folks there and take a look at the pathways. And so that's something maybe we can organize a group meet up there and, and-
Yeah, I'd like to be there.
Yeah. Okay. Harry as well, I'll try and get you included in that meeting. All right, um, so now we're on a discussion or resolution to approve local law E. We've had that local law now for a little while. Did anybody have any questions or comments about that? I think we only have minor changes to that from its first iteration. It's a very short law which basically empowers us to sell plots. And you should know that we're going to, at least for now, continue with the practice of selling plots at the cemetery. So if you are interested in one, please come see Sue McCann here in Town Hall. Operation and management is discussed in this law, fees and charges, penalties for violations, use of the cemetery. And so this would be resolution number sixty-three. Dated September twenty-sixth, authorizing the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook of local law E proposed of twenty eighteen. We will now call it local law number five. Regarding Red Church Cemetery. It was presented to the public and to the town board on September eleventh this year. We have determined that the law is best described as a local legislative decision constituting a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. I so move the approval of local law number five of twenty eighteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much. So we have a resolution authorizing the execution of an Empire State Work Agreement Trail, rather, Work Agreement Empire State Trail. Just for a reminder, folks at home-
Judge Stone.
I did, I sure did.
Five for Justice Court.
Well, we're skipping around. Why don't I stick with Empire State Trail Work Agreement and then I'll jump back to five. Thank you for keeping me-
Just so I know what I'm actually looking at.
Yeah, keeping me straight here. Okay, so the Empire State Trail is seven hundred and fifty miles long. It's also going to be in the town of Red Hook. My understanding is going up River Road. There is some work to be done signage essentially up in the northern part of our township, just north of Tivoli. And so there's a work agreement. We all have that. There's a letter that references the agreement Kid Lane to Woods Road.
So that's all within, within the village, then?
No, actually, uh, the village has its own agreement. These are Kid Lane up to the village and then beyond, you know?
There's a little piece of each end.
Right, so if you were all part of that-
Exactly.
Woods Road after the village.
The trail comes out of the D E C lands.
I do know very well.
And that's in the township, yeah, and that's in the township and then goes through the village and, um, north. So we have, I believe we have a resolution for this.
We do, yep. Yes, we did, resolution sixty-four.
Sixty-four, authorizing the execution of an Empire State Trail Work Agreement. Whereas New York State Department of Transportation proposes to enter into Empire State Trail Work Agreement with the town. New York State Office of Parks and Recreation historic preservation for the construction ownership and maintenance of the Empire State Trail improvements on the property of the town of Red Hook. And, you know, the trail is sometimes on road, sometimes off road. In this case, we're talking mostly on road where the work is proposed for and it really involves signage mostly. Okay, and so that would be resolution number sixty-four and I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you very much. And there are some things I need to sign. We're going to number five. We're discussing a justice court grant. Every year, we take advantage, well, we try to take advantage of every grant opportunity. And we have to thank Judge Jonah. He's always on top of the grant opportunities that exist with, with the courts. And so we have very outdated, outmoded fire detection and suppression system here in Town Hall. It's, uh, the cost to update would be about seventy-four, seventy-five hundred dollars. So Judge Jonah has been kind enough to, um, working with our purchasing manager, Ted Kudzie, to apply for this grant. And we have a resolution, I believe, to that effect.
You know, it looks like the justice has submitted a form of resolution that they want to have adopted, which I didn't see before.
Yeah.
So if you could just give me one second, I'll look at it and then maybe you can use their form.
We can just use their form instead of ours.
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, because they know exactly what the Brandon Gacy is looking for, so, um-
Yeah, that's this one.
Yeah, so-
Yeah, because this is more wide-ranging than-
Well, you know, we didn't have a dollar amount, so theirs is all completed with the dollar amount that they wanted, so that's fine. So thirty thousand dollars is what they're looking for.
Now, that's the maximum you can apply for. What we're actually looking for is seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, but this resolution is worded to authorize them to pursue any new grant applications. And more particulars, item two, the twenty-sixteens, which probably shouldn't be updated. Justice Court Assistant Grant requesting funds not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
That's why I said it's a little more wide-ranging. That's how you were describing it, if we're going to go with this one.
If we're going to go with the generic. Um, we would have to change the date to September twenty-sixth.
And in item two, I guess it should be the twenty eighteen Justice Court Assistant Grant or is this the twenty nineteen? This is the twenty eighteen, right?
You would think. If anything, it might be twenty nineteen.
So in item one and two, you want that to be twenty eighteen?
I'm sorry, were you on his resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, in item one, it says available for fiscal year, so we're, we're in, this would be fiscal year twenty eighteen, right? Or is it fiscal year twenty eighteen, nineteen?
For the state, I think it would be twenty eighteen, right?
A minute, I would just go with whatever he said, but-
Well, we have to have the correct years in here.
I mean, they, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be correct years, I think.
So we're going to use Jonah?
I think we're going to use Jonah. So a resolution with a date of September twenty-sixth, it would be resolution sixty- It would be resolution sixty five, yes? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Sixty five, okay. Um, we're gonna change number one to be twenty eighteen. We are going to, uh, change number two to be twenty eighteen, I think as well. Yes, because I see the second sentence also is twenty eighteen. And then we're gonna change day of September to be twenty sixth day of September. Okay. Very good. And I move resolution number sixty five, authorizing the town of Red Hook to pursue a grant application to obtain funding for the town of Red Hook Justice Court. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, Judge Jonah and Judge Jeff, who over the years have worked to get us grant funds to have many of the things that we have in this room is because of applications that they made for grants. All right. We are moving on to unfortunately a very current topic. Sexual harassment policy for the town of Red Hook. So we already have a policy for, uh, to address sexual harassment. But what we are doing now is updating our policy to reflect on new requirements by the state. And so what we have done to ensure that we match the state requirements is to literally pull the state recommended policy for the time being, since we need to adopt it, I think, in the next few weeks, right, for the deadline.
Yes, the deadline for, um, getting the, uh, policy out to your staff is October sixth, so. Then we also have a deadline of January one to accomplish a training program that complies with the new state requirements. So I understand that Ann will be talking about some of those options in terms of setting up training.
Right.
Right.
Normally we had this, this type of training incorporated with other training. We were doing it every other year, but it looks like we need to do it every year now.
Every year, and there's a very specific requirement, so I think you may end up, if you wanna do it with other things, you're gonna end up doing this, you know, sort of as standalone.
Take a break.
With somebody who's qualified to teach this and then maybe you could do it the same day or maybe the, you know, maybe a following day.
Right. Go on to the next step.
Uh, the remaining, um, safety training and other kinds of training that you do on a regular basis.
Right. Well, I think it's all good, I think it's great. There's even acknowledgement that we need to sign, that we've received the policy and reviewed the policy. And it's all towards working to ensure that this place continues to be a place that people feel comfortable working in, so.
This is, this is the operating document here.
Yeah, so this is the document that, uh, and Ann has put it in the form of an addendum to your, um, uh, Policies and Procedures Manual that replaces the one that you currently have. And it is very important that all of your, particularly anybody in the supervisory role understands what the policies and procedures are and that there are reporting requirements so that issues are addressed and investigated promptly. So, you know, it starts with the culture, obviously, and the statement. That's where you guys come in, policy and statement. And then training is, is really what's key for the rest of the staff.
Yep.
We, um, normally town board members don't participate in that kind of training, but it seems like we.
You absolutely should. You should, you absolutely should. And so when we coordinate, we'll try to coordinate the best times. I recognize that, you know, certainly in your case, Christine, you're, you're working during the course of the work days in Sarah too. That may, may be, um, you know, the case for you, but we'll, we'll see if we can organize a date that, you know, perhaps works for everyone to have that training. Okay. Is there a bit, all right.
So do we, do we introduce resolution?
We do have to do this resolution.
Are we gonna discuss the policy?
Would you like to discuss the policy, yeah?
I had a couple of comments and questions.
Sure.
I'm just, I guess I'm wondering, like, how much of this can we potentially, like, I know we have a deadline for this, but consider changing or is it adopted from state manuals?
So, this is exactly, pretty much, the, the state's model.
It is.
Um, and so to the extent you wanted to change something, it's possible. We would need to then review the proposed changes against the minimum standards that the state has set out. So they've given you a sample policy, but they've also given you minimum standards for both the policy and the training. So you can do that, you just have to go back and true it up against those, those policy requirements before you implement something different, right?
It may be very problematic.
No, I don't think so, I think that.
The things I'm proposing are definitely more stringent as far.
Well, that's what I thought.
Compared to like loosening, so I don't know that it would.
Right, you can certainly adapt things and you can certainly do something like that. You just need to go back and true it up against those policies.
Yeah. Well, something for us to think about, I'm not sure we wanna miss the deadline, but, um, on page two at the top, it talks about how employees, including managers and supervisors, who engage in sexual harassment or knowingly allow such behavior to continue will be penalized, but it doesn't ever say how. I'd really like us to think about what would be appropriate there. I guess I'm just concerned, again, it's obviously top of mind, 'cause there's so many stories about that. And the things that happens is that things get reported and they get booted down the line or they get filed away. And I'd just like us to think about if there's any tape there that we can put in, realizing that that's a sensitive, you know, area, but.
Well, you know, I think it's gonna be very fact specific. I think that you do, you know, have some other provisions, some more generic provisions in your employee policy that speak to progressive discipline.
I mean, should it, but should it like, you know, refer to those then or, you know, something? It just seems like, just saying penalized doesn't really help in a specific situation, you know? If we discover that this happens.
We probably should have a specific penalty.
I think you're gonna find that it depends on the nature of the situation.
Right, I mean, it depends on the nature, but that's what I'm saying, if we already have a policy that talks about progressive discipline or something.
But it, but, but that's the way it, it uses those words. I mean, progressive discipline is gonna be very fact specific as well.
Right.
So you can't necessarily develop a personnel policy that's gonna address every single situation.
No, I know, but I'm saying, so couldn't we say that we'll be penalized according to the progressive discipline policy of the town of Red Hook found in our employee handbook, do you know what I mean? Assuming that that then has guidelines to cover.
Correct me if I'm going off line here, but it's, um, the nature is less, heaven forbid, we have something that's very egregious. I don't know that we would wanna tie ourselves into the progressive discipline, which might require a written warning and then this happens and then that happens, 'cause it might be something that we wanna move much faster on or something. So I don't know, Chris, would that, that would sort of confuse that situation, right? Because we'd be tying ourselves into having to follow that specific process, right?
Well, there is a, there is a process, I'm sorry, Chris, did you wanna answer before?
No, go ahead, go right ahead.
Just there is a process and that's what page five, six and seven really speak to is what, what is the supervisors of the department or of, of, of the town itself? What are those responsibilities? How are complaints, uh, how, how they need to be addressed in writing and after investigation? And a list of everyone that was interviewed and statements and timeline of events, prior relevant incidents, a final resolution of the complaint, together with any corrective action. So, I mean, there is really a process for that. Um, it doesn't necessarily say what, you know, what the, um, penalty is.
Corrective actions, right.
But I'm talking about, so just to be clear, I'm not talking about the penalty for somebody who harasses. I'm more talking about like this, this thing of, um, like if.
Oh, if someone ignored it?
Yeah, who knowingly allows such behavior to continue. So I, it just feels very vague to me, like, so let's say somebody files something and it doesn't get acted on or whatever. What is the penalty for that? Like, it should, there should be some kind of, it says you'll be penalized, but it doesn't say how. And so it doesn't help a future town board then if we're faced with that to, to deal with the issue, you know?
It doesn't, it's sort of case specific.
Is there like a civil, is there like a civil service thing we can refer to or there's just nothing that we can say?
Well, if the, you mean, if the person who is, is at, at fault is, has civil service rights?
No, I think she means, right, if, if, if someone doesn't, if it's reported and then that supervisor or doesn't follow the process correctly or dismisses the, you know, whatever, how are they?
Doesn't follow it up.
Right.
So I'm gonna say, again, it depends on what your authority is over that person, right? And, you know, if that's a person who has civil service rights, then you're gonna go through that process as part of. This is one of many kinds of disciplinary procedures that you might be following with that person.
And the, and the policy which everyone gets also lays out if you're not satisfied or you're not getting a response from the, the government or your supervisor that's in charge of what the external remedies are. You know, you can go to, you know, not only the police, but talk about division of human rights and so on and so forth. So it gives you other avenues, but it doesn't specifically say what the punishment will be.
Yeah, I mean, you know, perhaps it would be useful, rather than focusing on the words of the policy, to sit and, and, um, go through some scenarios with what would happen in certain situations. I mean, particularly as part of the training module, um, to make sure that if you get a report, what are you gonna do? And make sure that everyone knows who they're reporting to and what happens when that report happens and who, you know, who's gonna hear back about it.
Right.
So that things don't get lost, just as you say, and where is it gonna be recorded? And one of the things that I think we noted is that reports are gonna be logged with the clerk so that we know that there's a certain place that things are logged and that, you know, if you wanna know whether that was followed up on, you have a place to check that. But it's definitely, I mean, this is new to us, so I think, um, and, and it is, you know, it's a single policy, but it probably can be improved.
Yeah, I just, in general, vague things like will be penalized really drive me crazy, both as somebody who sits on a board that's supposed to do the penalizing. And I'd love to have a guideline for what that should look like, you know? You know, it just gets so messy, especially in a small, small place, you know? Everybody knows, everybody, you know, it's just really difficult, so. So from that perspective and also thinking about employees and just trying to make sure they're protected, so.
But we should look at some examples, not a.
So that was one thing.
Is there something else that's also vague with that?
And then, well, just some of the supervisory responsibilities on page five.
Aye.
Again, it says, the second paragraph under supervisory responsibilities, it says, in addition to be subject to discipline if they engage in sexually harassing contact themselves, conduct themselves, supervisors and managers will be subject to discipline for failing to report suspected sexual harassment, but it doesn't ever say what that discipline would be, so I'm just flagging that, but I feel like it. I just, there's gotta be something we can point to. I, I totally understand what you're saying, that it is very subjective depending on the situation and the who's, you know, who are we talking about, but I, I, there's gotta be something we could refer to outside of this or a state guideline or a county one or something else in our employee handbook or.
Uh, we, I've seen other ones that would say something like subject to discipline up to and including dismissal.
Yeah.
Right, with that type of language.
Yeah, like something like that, right.
You know, that's very typical and I just will point out that it's not in here.
Yeah.
Right.
So it, it, you know, because I think that we're trying to make a generic policy, perhaps they didn't include that. I think that if we start to look at some of the, um, training manuals and templates, I think those things might be helpful in, in walking through that. And I think it would be good to walk through a sample scenario. Think about what, what happened and how that process would play itself out, because then you're more prepared to deal with it.
Right.
What's the deadline again, what does it have to be?
So the policy needs to be in place by October sixth, um, and then.
Okay, and so what would be the process if we researched it further or we go through the training?
You can amend it later.
Just amended.
We could just amend it, that's fine.
Sure, sure.
Just because we're using the state one, we can still make it better.
You can change it anytime you want to, you just, again, you have to make sure it's compliant with the state's mandated, um, guidelines, okay?
My only other comment was I just, um, again, trying to think of this outside of our current context, just in general for future boards and supervisors. It just feels a little, um, I don't know what the word is. The investigations, it looks like, just happen, just the town supervisor conducts them? Is what it looks like, there's no like committee or there's no like.
So I'm gonna say it's gonna depend on the allegation board again, I mean.
Right, but it says specifically the supervisor, so is there a way that we can either make that more general or say?
Well, I think you wanna start with, there needs to be a.
There needs to be a.
The buck needs to stop someplace, right?
Absolutely.
You know, you could, I mean, a, a bigger organization would probably designate someone, um, you know, an EO officer.
HR person or something.
You know, right, right, exactly. So that is a designation you can make. That's, that's not something that is dictated by the policy form. That's, that's determined by whatever works for your particular municipality, so.
But it just says really specifically, and upon receipt of complaint, the town supervisor will conduct an immediate review and blah, 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 blah. It goes down the thing of what they're going to do, which, you know, the investigation steps themselves look fine. It just seems like, should that be more than one person doing the review? Should that be, again, or not, it's not about any one person, I'm just saying for, you know, for future.
All, all stuff, all stuff we can consider.
Yeah.
You know, just the, the more you have in that group, the more.
I can just picture, in general, workplace situation where there's only one person who does that and it's a somebody who's like political position, who's, you know, like, it's just, it's difficult to imagine that that is going to feel fair to everybody if it's not either by, I, I hate the idea of doing it by committee, but like, is there somebody on that ethics board or, I, like, I don't know what the answer is, but it's, I'm just.
Some of the, well, just remember that this is part of your employee management and discipline.
This is employee.
So it should fit into their.
It should fit into the same.
Right, same structure, however, you know, if you have a, you know, it may be that you wanna escalate certain types, you probably would, certain types of allegations, you might ask for, you know, an independent investigation, you know?
But, I mean, I'd say that. I agree with you, I mean, we could update this to say that, like, the town supervisor in concert with the HR person, you know, would conduct the review, just so you have two sets of eyes and ears.
It seems like there ought to be two people at least doing any situation like this. And I also think there should be something in there that says like town supervisor or, or next.
Or deputy supervisor.
Right, next level person, like, I don't know, it just seems like, why are we writing in a very specific position when that position can easily be either part of the problem or.
Well, you think, and that's where you would add language that says, you know, like, if the town supervisor, if the town supervisor is involved in the complaint then the deputy supervisor will do that. You know, if the HR person is involved in the complaint, then it would be the town supervisor and the deputy supervisor or something like that, yeah.
I think these are all the thoughts that, you know, we certainly can consider for the future. I, I just wanna make sure that whatever changes we make meet the statute, um, having something on the books. And, you know, they're preparing a tutorial, which they don't have ready yet, this date, ironically, even though they want us to pass them. I don't know if that's gonna be.
Well, so can we, can we adopt this one and then put it back on the agenda to update?
So in the.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you certainly can, um, and I was gonna say, so the model that, that we were provided with, that, that blank there is upon receipt of a complaint, person or office designated will conduct an immediate review. And I think the goal is that there's someone whose job it is to do this. And regardless of who that is, it's somebody who's supposed to immediately deal with it and not sort of.
Well, 'cause you wanna avoid.
Do you think it's inconsistent then to have, so investigate, it says really specifically, investigations will be done in accordance with the following steps, and it only says the town supervisor, but then on the complaint form it says the supervisor receiving the complaint will act on it. Do you know what I mean? Like, it just feels a little inconsistent.
It's very inconsistent. I've been going through it page by page and there's, there's, um, guidelines and instructions, one is contrary to another within it. And I think this is very much a work in progress. I can't imagine how you could, um, there's nothing here you can implement with any assurance. I can't imagine how you could, um, there's nothing here you can implement with any assurance it will be effective. As I see it now, I think it's a work in pro- progress, and the work needs to be done.
But we have to. Yeah, don't disagree. But we do need to adopt something.
Well, start, start with this, and it says, there's, there's more in the later.
Okay. Works for me, if it works for you.
I think we just wanna keep an eye on what the state is developing, as they develop, maybe perhaps announcements to the model, then we can look at each of those.
Yeah.
And certainly we can, you know, begin a training, developing a training, uh, program and, and, you know, walk through those potential issues, um, that'd be helpful, you know?
Um, and the tutorial.
You know, I have not drafted this, it's hard to.
Yeah, we just, we just lifted it from a state model.
Do anything other than say it's very clear that they want you to stick to their model or justify why you're changing it, so.
Yeah. All right, um, knowing that we're gonna revisit this, um, and maybe at the beginning of the year we'll have some new thoughts on how to amend it, um, resolution number sixty-six, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, September twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, adopting an amended sexual harassment policy for the town of Red Hook. Whereas the town of Red Hook employee handbook currently contains a sexual harassment policy at appendix three, and whereas pursuant to New York State Labor Law two oh one G one, the New York State Division of Human Rights has produced a model sexual harassment prevention policy, and whereas pursuant to New York State Labor Law two oh one G one D, every employer within the state shall adopt the model sexual harassment prevention policy promulgated pursuant to Labor Law two oh one dash G, or establish a sexual harassment prevention policy to prevent sexual harassment that equals or exceeds the minimum standards provided by such model sexual harassment prevention policy. And whereas there is on file with the town clerk an amended sexual harassment policy in the form provided by the state's model, now therefore be resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook as follows, that we adopt the amended sexual harassment policy for the town, and that we amend our existing employee handbook, appendix three, and the supervisor and town's other officers, employees and agents are hereby authorized and directed for and in the name on behalf of the town to do all acts and things required or provided by a sexual harassment policy. And this resolution shall take effect immediately, resolution number sixty-six, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are at the, at the point in time this evening where we have board reports, or rather, committee reports tonight as it turns out. And we don't have Bill here, so I will take over a couple of his, um, responsibilities. Town of Red Hook assessor's office reports for August and September. We continue taking incoming calls and meeting with the residents regarding exemption information along with assessment questions. The deputy assessors prepare all the exemption renewals for mailings that go out at the end of the year. The assessor's office is giving out new information regarding the changes for enhanced star applicants for twenty nineteen. So it sounds like there's a change, change in process there for enhanced star applicants. Um, there'll be an informational meeting which the assessor will attend on October third. Approved that those procedures will be presented for seniors so that they can get up to speed on that. And let's see, uh, the assessor attended the workshop for the new website, continues to review all sales information, it was a total of eleven sales within the town of Red Hook, Village of Red Hook and the village of Tivoli, ten single family and one residential vacant land sale. The lowest sale price was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred, and the highest was for five hundred and sixty-five thousand. During the assessor's meeting, real property director brought up a new recently signed legislation allowing electronic filing for act exemption renewals. That's great, so now we just have to help teach my former friends, myself included, how to do all that. We're waiting on the final word from our director on this, um, and the assessor goes on to say, as always, she appreciates the support of all the departments here in town hall. Okay, uh, building and zoning, Harry, that's also two months, August and September.
Yeah, okay, trying to figure out which is, which, I get a pile of stuff.
You got it right there on the front.
I know.
Maybe you could just read us the front page.
I'm trying to separate, separate one thing from another here. Okay, in August, this is a two-month report, there were fifty-one permits, uh, sixty-one inspections, forty-seven certificates of occupancy, eight complaints, and fifteen thousand dollars of revenue, revenue generated in this stack of in, of the, of the, uh, material behind it, um, confirming, what was the? Item by item.
Item by item, okay, very good, thank you very much, Harry. Uh, Christine, would you be kind enough to report on the police department, give us an overall?
Sure, so, um, this is for July, this is the report for July. And during that time period, there were, um, ninety-eight total incidents, thirty, thirteen arrests and sixty-seven tickets issued. And, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, minute thirty, one different, um, types of, um, areas that those fell in, to everything from assisting citizens to missing persons, to security checks and trespass, et cetera.
Okay, very good, thank you very much, Christine. Harry, we're back to you with purchasing?
Okay, purchasing, uh, was busy, he did ninety-five purchase orders, start with a big number there, for a total of ninety-four thousand dollars. Uh, the largest was for crack, crack repair and paving on the highways for just under thirteen thousand dollars. And we installed, um, installing key fob door system, uh, isn't done yet. The striping of the tennis courts was done in August. We purchased equipment and tools for the Red, Red to, Red Church Cemetery, with quite a long list to get the, the operation going. We purchased four computers, um, to replace outdated equipment, and started to search the state contracts for geotherm equipment for possible use in the town hall for our heating system for this building.
Okay, well, thank you, Harry, um, Sarah, did you get shut out here, or do you have a?
I have trees.
You have trees, could you report on a tree?
Could do the water district or the rec commission.
All right, what would you like to do?
I'll do trees.
Okay.
Okay, in August, um, the tree committee discussed their page for the new website, and then have to report they did update their page, so that was great. They ordered trees for the fall planting, and monitored the new trees on Pitcher Lane, which required watering due to the hot weather. And we worked on the Five Mighties over by Denver Way. And they're working on a tree owner's manual to distribute to the public. In the fall, they planted, they are planting five trees, five more trees along Pitcher Lane, and, um, let's see, it looks like all the trees will be in honor of forty years in business for Conway's. And, um, they're working on updating their forestry management manual over the next few months, and more ideas for the website, so keep checking that. And, um, they may put a lot of their budget money into more tree maintenance near Pitcher Lane if, if they have it.
Did you wanna do, uh, water, water district, okay?
Water district, of which I am a resident for August, um, they did not have a, it's like they had, I can't do the math really quickly, almost four hundred gallons, no, I can't. They don't have a listed amount for kilo gallons per day, but normal would be seventy-seven, and in September it was a hundred and seven, so let's assume it was somewhere between those two. I don't know why they don't have one listed, it just has a.
An asterisk.
It just has an asterisk, and says they thought there might be a leak and they needed to update it, or need to monitor it, but it doesn't say why they thought that, so maybe it was high or something, very high. Looks like all the other, um, tests and monitoring levels are normal. You know, they're thinking about, based on the recommendation of a new member of their committee, they're thinking about investing some of the reserve funds into, um, these like really safe government insured term deposits that might help generate some more.
Little bit of interest, yeah.
A little bit of interest, so they're looking into that, and I think we can trust them to be very cautious and careful when they do that. And they just got a few work items, and then for September, a hundred and seven kilogallons per day were pumped as opposed to the normal seventy-seven. And they kept monitoring the pumps to see if there might be an issue, all the levels were normal. Still looking into the investment issue and repairing some of their meter readers. And we've got a nice list of things to work on through the rest of twenty eighteen.
I think they're waiting for the Federal Reserve to finish raising rates, which they continuously, um.
We did sound today.
Today as well, that's correct, Harry. Um, Harry, would you mind doing the recommission report and maybe just a quick summation and say?
Sorry, everybody put their head down, it's now.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a, it denotes that, the, the end of the season, so all of end this, end of season, or season work is being done. And, and I've got a clip on here, so I can't open it, so. We're looking into, screening, screening for the tennis courts, I don't know if there's any decision yet, and, and, you know, preparing the snack, snack bar, we're securing equipment storage, some of the programs worked, worked very well. Changed the latches on the tennis court, I have more than one report here.
Okay, yeah, it's a lot, a lot going on.
Yeah, and, and it's been, again, the list gets more and more extensive in terms of shutdown, um.
They did a lot of work on the snack bar area, right, they did a lot of work on the snack bar area.
They did, yeah, they did that, and we need to do something about drones, they have a policy for drones in the rec bar, they're an obvious concern. I don't know if it had a successful, um, game day and fundraiser for their employees, which is, which is nice to see. And John, dear tractor won't start, it's an electric problem. So he doesn't know, and he doesn't know what's wrong with it, I'm sure, I'm sure it's fixed a long ago, I just, I guess. The middle, middle field lights, middle field lights are, are, are an issue, and have been an issue. And, and I suggested, Joan, again, look at what it would cost, and, and the cost to do it is something in the order of two hundred thousand dollars to put, to put lights that were up to date and truly safe. What we have there now are, uh, a dated system that is inadequate. But that's a, a big, a big nut to crack to pay for that kind of, of a lighting system there. But, but without it, it's not really a safe place to play ball with them.
Okay. Very good, thank you very much, Harry. Um, yes, hopefully if there's, if it's still warm enough, you'll get a chance to go out and try the new tennis courts, I know that the school is already using them. And, uh, we're happy to have them back. All right, um, we have, uh, intermunicipal task force, Christine.
Mm-hmm, okay, so, uh, two reports, one from August and one from September, but they both, um, revolve around discussions of, uh, short-term rental issues for the town of Red Hook, for things like Airbnbs. Um, they, the committee has been reviewing research on, um, this project or this, this concept, um, from other jurisdictions. They did talk about the difference between private transactions and commercial enterprises, the need to regulate for health and fire inspect, inspections, traffic and parking, and the requirement of requiring a local property management agent to monitor and be responsible for such rentals. In August, they also concluded their discussion about flag lots, and by consensus agreed that flag lots should be prohibited in the town of Red Hook, excuse me, and how to implement this proposal will be further pursued.
Okay, thank you very much, Christine. I'm wondering if that's all that we have for tonight, is that possible?
Budget adjustments.
Yes, yeah, mhm, we do, we have, and I wanna draw your attention to some budget adjustments that Ann Conway prepared for us. And this is to move some of the money that we've accumulated in our contingent account into accounts where we expect to have some increases, or at least the potential for increases. And so you see the various accounts where she's distributing the excess that we have in contingent. Uh, there's an in and out in the B fund, engineering deposits, that's our escrow accounts, that we've had so much escrow work done that we have to increase both the revenue and the expense side on that. And a little bit more for, uh, vital statistics, building inspector, drawing down the contingent account a little bit as well. We're also appropriating a little bit of money for, um, radios, uh, for the highway department, so the men and women can talk to each other on the job when they're out on site. So if there's, uh, no, uh, questions about these budget adjustments, I would make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, I don't know that I have much in the way of cars, but let's see what we've got here. Uh, just a letter, well, I shouldn't say just a letter, he'd be upset at me, just a letter from Chuck Schumer. Are you a senator? Talking about, uh, the farm to school grant program. It provides competitive grants to support school districts, state and local agencies, tribal nations, agricultural producers, and nonprofit organizations in their efforts to increase local food served through child nutrition program. And it off, that program offers grants for training, supporting operations, planning, purchasing equipment, developing school gardens, developing partnerships, and implementing farm to school programs. And it talks about, um, improving access to local foods for, uh, schools. Uh, many of you have been involved, involved in the farm to school initiatives, um, here in Red Hook for years, know that, um, this is an important program, and I, of course, promptly sent it over to our school superintendent, um, this letter, so. Just wanna let you know that the federal government is supporting these types of initiatives.
On, on that topic, just really quick or relatedly, um, you know that I've been meeting with a bunch of representatives from Rhinebeck and Tivoli about village, both villages, Rhinebeck Village and the town of Rhinebeck, about possible food waste initiatives, and so that is sort of, one of the things we wanna do is do like an, some kind of education program that might span all five municipalities and might, maybe not the first year, but eventually include school districts, so that, I, I know it's, it's like a related topic, food waste and, and farming. In my mind, they kind of all go together, but, um.
Well, we used to have, I don't know if you, you are near them, we used to have, a lot of the food waste from the school went to a chicken farm.
Right, yeah, exactly, like, you know, to me it seems, anyway. Yeah, exactly, like, you know, to me, it seems, anyway. So that, but also, we will eventually be circulating a draft, like, resolution that's just basically, like, we would all, if we all agree to it, it's just sort of formalizing in an informal way, that we're all working together on things, and it's mainly to give us a document that we can then point to when we, like, go out for grants and things, to say, like, it's nothing that's, like, legally binding, it's more just like, because this is an important issue, we've agreed to work together. So I will send that around once we get the language that we'd like to see in there, and so everybody can take a look at it and see what they think, but just to put that on your horizon.
Thank you very much. Anything else? If not, I'm going to make a motion, we go into attorney-client, and say goodnight to all of you at home, and thank you very much for joining us.